Thank you so much.
You're all set. Have a good meeting.
Thank you. All right, the Situate School Committee is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcomed and respected. We ask our school, our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. Okay, we are, see I'll call the meeting to order here at 6:02. The roll call vote. Start with Dr. Barcoski.
Yes, here.
Denwick?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Lindblom?
Here.
Randlini, yes.
Yes.
Here, present. All right, let us begin here with public comment. Okay, being on a person, Ms. Withrow, hand raised. One second.
Hi, everyone. Laurie Withrow, 62, Anne Vinyl Road. I just had two comments I wanted to bring up tonight. The first thing I wanted to address was the school calendar. I'm not sure. I saw something on the agenda tonight. I don't know if this is the first night you're speaking about it. I just hadn't seen it before. But I wanted to bring up the discussion of going back to school before Labor Day this year. I know we've stuck with after Labor Day for many years and I, for one, was one of those people who said, "We live in a beach town. I want as much summer as I can get in." But I think over the years, my own feelings have changed on that. I know once my older kids got to high school, I realized that a lot of the student athletes, they had to be back anyway because their, their practices had started. So the high school kids were already back. And then I watched on a lot of the moms' pages of, of parents looking for, they didn't have camp options anymore at the end of August. So they were struggling to find care for their children. And the college students who could possibly watch them were already back at school. And in June, those college students are here, in case, you know, we did get out a little bit earlier. But mostly, I want to speak to it as far as the, as education. Because everyone in the state has, or, you know, maybe even across the board, schools in other states going back earlier. But especially in Massachusetts, where we all have the same MCAS days or AP testing. So other districts are getting in more educational days at the beginning of the year. So, you know, we may be getting them a few extra days in June, but that's not helping us get the education in before our testing in the spring. So I guess those were my points about that, you know, maybe even, you know, consider bringing the teachers in on that Monday and going to school Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and having a four-day weekend of Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. So that was my thoughts on that. And then the second thing I wanted to bring up was the MSBA Heatherly Cushing Project. I've been, I've posted this the past few days on some Facebook pages about the project because I just don't think there's a lot of publicity out there on this project. So I was just hoping that anyone listening and on this call could help promote the project just to get it shown to more people in the public. So, thank you so much and thanks for all you do.
Thanks so much, Laurie. We will definitely, this is our first reading of the calendar, just so everybody knows. And we'll take a look at that and see if, when we, you know, kind of go through dates and how things align, you know, looking at first day and last day, we'll definitely take that into consideration. And in terms of the MSBA project, appreciate that mention as well. I know there is an event tonight that the Friends of group is hosting. It's kind of, I think it's sort of a very much a launch of their, their sort of more visibility that they're going to be having in the community. So hopefully, you know, we'll see them around town a little bit more and they've, they've been a really great kind of partner in this, so we'll be looking to hear more from them. Okay, any other public comments before we go forth? Check here, seeing no hands raised. All right, let's move on to our student report. Louisa Kingsley and David.
Hi, everyone. Hope you're all doing well. Our first update is about winter sports. We only have a few weeks left in our winter season, so these are the dates of our senior nights. Gymnastics was on January 26th and boys hockey was on January 27th. And upcoming senior nights are swim tomorrow on January 30th, wrestling and indoor track on January 31st, girls basketball on February 9th, and boys basketball and cheer on February 13th. Girls hockey doesn't have any seniors this year and the speed team senior night is to be determined. Sixteen freshmen and sophomore DECA students presented their marketing projects on ways to increase revenue at Gillette Stadium to a craft marketing representative at Gillette Stadium on Monday, January 8th. The students received great feedback. The following business projects from our DECA marketing class have qualified to the DECA state level competition. These projects consist of a 10 to 20-page written business plan as well as a visual presentation. First, there are two community giving initiative projects. The first is by Sarah Gillis and Katerina Gaiet, and the second is by Amelia Merritt, Hannah Dwyer, and Lila Fahy. There is a community awareness initiative project by Taylor McFadden. There is a business solutions project by Lindsay Thurling. There is a financial literacy project by Bailey Young, Savannah Garbadian, and Grace Linda Deja. There is an innovation business plan by Riley Gutierrez and Sammy Howell. There are two startup business plans. The first is by Jack Rowens and the second is by Luke Tremontasi and Brian Good. And finally, there is a sales project initiative by Quinn de Corsi, Ruby Dunn, and Jack Constantine. Congratulations to the following students who participated in this year's Southeastern Senior District Music Festival at Canton High School on January 5th and 6th and were the top scoring musicians. They are eligible to audition for the MMEA All-State Music Festival on January 20th at Shrewsbury High School. If selected, students will perform at the Historic Symphony Hall in Boston on March 23rd. The students are Nikolai Bokovich, Matthew Carolyn, Mackenzie Gilmore, Patrick Hale, Scarlett Hickman, Patrick McClellan, Weston Robertson, Matthew Short, and Michaela Whitaker. And that's all I have, so thank you.
All right, so, um, all right, so unfortunately, I did not, was not able to print out what things, so I promise that when I'm looking at my phone, I'm not scrolling social media. I am reading off of the report, just so we're clear. So to get started, on January 24th, we had 130 out of 133 AP Lang students sit for the mock exam. Mock exams are one of the many benefits AP students receive from our partnership with Mass Insight. Students' exams are scored by a third party, enabling them to get objective feedback on their progress as well as the experience of taking the exam before taking the actual counted exam. I know almost everyone taking Lang last year took the mock exam and it really helped a lot of people get a good idea of what it's actually like. Louisa Kingsley and Max Allen have been selected to represent Massachusetts as a 2024 U.S. Presidential Scholar nominee. This is a very prestigious distinction, so congratulations to the both of them for this election. There we go. Mr. Larranger and his administration team met with the student leadership team on January 9th to discuss the student leadership roles for our eighth grade night that was held on January 18th. Student leaders at Situate High School played a major role in the eighth grade night's activities and made our school proud. The eighth grade set sale showcase was held on January 18th at SHS from 6:00 to 6:00, 7:30. All eighth grade parents, guardians, and students learned about the curriculum options, internships, athletics, club offerings, and our music and art programs. It was a huge success and thank you to Mr. Beatty for supporting SHS. My sister was actually one of the attendees, so I think I speak for her in saying how insightful it is for our eighth grade families to have these opportunities ahead of them. Class Cup events for January were posted by the administration. All students who attended will sign in a QR code at the event in order to get points for their class. Juniors currently are in first place, not for long, and the following events for Class Cup recognized. Girls basketball on January 9th, wrestling on January 17th, and boys basketball on January 23rd. The girls locker room project is also almost complete and the updates are amazing. The athletes and coaches are going to have a great space to get ready for competition in the future. And Kindness Project, or Kindness Week, is also going on right now. Each day, as they just will have a theme to show our unity as a school. Monday, or today, was Mental Health Day. Tuesday will be Inclusion Day. Wednesday will be Beautification Day. Thursday will be Charity Day. And Friday will be Excel Appreciation Day. This week is meant to increase school spirit as well as helping awareness to all aspects of our Situate community. Plus, we got to wear pajamas to school for Mental Health Day and getting pajama, getting to wear pajamas to school is always a plus. So with that said, it's great to see you all and have a good night.
Exactly. How do you get the word out about the spirit, the week, the Mental Health Day in our community?
They announce it on like the lab speaker and stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's see, we have some student recognition. You have Social Studies Department Chair Sam Lesniak along with Legion Representative to celebrate student learning, student achievement, let's see if it sounds like.
Very much so. And actually, this is unrelated to why I'm here, but before he goes too far, I just wanted David to come up and be recognized. David, would you come on up? I know it's not officially on the agenda, but we got some pretty amazing news as of this morning and I wanted to make sure you were aware. Oh, everyone should be aware. Right? Thank you. All right, so yesterday, or actually this morning, I received some messages from Ms. Driscoll, her and David, from this weekend. And I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware. So David, early in the year, participated in our local Voices of Democracy speech competition. It's sponsored by the VFW Auxiliary. It was run by myself and Kathy Hall at the high school. He placed in the top three of our competition and went on to the district level. From there, he was selected as a district finalist, which is an impressive distinction in and of itself. And last month, he went on to participate in the state competition. So yesterday, all the district winners gathered together to celebrate all they had accomplished and to hear who had won the state competition. So from thousands of entries, David was selected to represent the entire state at the national level competition. So he will be one of 50 in the entire country to go to DC and compete for the national title. Earned some significant scholarship to DC and he's going to represent Situate High School there from March. I'd be wishing the best of luck, so congratulations.
Thank you so much.
So much, so much. I just didn't want him to run away with those.
You're very humble not to mention yourself in your autograph.
I knew you would never. Thank you, David.
Thanks so much.
All right, I'm actually here today to speak about the American Legion or Torque contest. This is a different speech competition. So this is the 15th year that we run this competition. We partnered with the Situate Post 144 to do this. The goal is to develop deeper knowledge of the Constitution among high school students and appreciation of the government. So students who elect to take part in this, it's a choice. They focus on a part of the Constitution that interests them. They independently research their topic and then they give an eight to 10-minute speech from memory, no notes, explaining how that aspect of the Constitution relates to the duties and obligations we have as citizens. So we actually have several members of Post 144 here with us today. If they could come on over. If you'd like to. Is it going to say left, right, or anything? Yeah, yeah. Come on over. So, yeah, one year, please. So these gentlemen spend countless hours every single year fundraising to support three scholarships which go to the winners of our oration contest. And this year, the total amounted to over $1,600. So specifically, I'd like to thank all of these guys here. We have Dennis the Door, Bob Callahan, Mr. Ward, and Mr. Walsh there at the end. So, thank you. All right, we also have the student winners who we'd like to recognize, so they'll come up. But the third place winner was Jane Ryan. She earned a $250 scholarship. She focused on the phrase "we the people" and explained over time how that group has expanded with difference to the advocacy movements. Jane specifically looked at the expansion of voting rights over time and urged young people to ensure that their voices were heard and that their votes were counted in our modern day government. So congratulations to Jane. Sophomore Mason Alvarez earned second place here at a $400 scholarship. He focused on the need for our country to modernize and update the Constitution's 10th Amendment, which in case you don't know that offhand, delegates power to the states. So Mason urged his listeners that change is created by ordinary citizens who choose to get involved and his deep research into the Constitution impressed our judges, so congratulations to Mason. And our first place winner who earned a $1,000 scholarship is Senior Max Allen. Max focused on the preamble of the Constitution, specifically one phrase, "secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves in our austerity." Max connected this phrase to the sacrifices made by those who served during World War II and the Cold War and explained how their service helped to ensure liberty for us all today. Max's historical understanding and his ability to speak clearly and persuasively was praised by all the judges, so congratulations to Max. Finally, I'd like to note that Max and Mason both qualified for the regional contest and competed last weekend, where in addition to their speech, they had to speak to one of the constitutional amendments, which is pulled literally from a hat minutes before they talk. In that contest, Max earned third in the region and Mason earned second place. And Mason will move on to the state finals, which will take place in a couple of weeks, so we wish him the best of luck. So I think I just speak for everyone of how impressive these students are to take this on voluntarily and their immense historical knowledge. And I also would like to thank our host here, who really puts so much time and energy into making sure that these students, you know, receive a scholarship, but I think more importantly than that, they get to practice these skills about civic patriotism, about participation in our government, and sort of the rights and privileges that we all have. So, thank you, guys.
Could, can Dennis make a presentation?
Of course.
You were doing a fine job.
Dennis, you say what, well, given Dennis.
No, 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 say whatever. He was a sergeant. Well, it's nice to see these young people taking an interest in government and the Constitution because I always remind, my troops here, they'll say, "Well, he didn't do it quite right." And I'll say, "Well, why don't you go up there and take his place?" Because it's amazing how they do it and they've got such a good memory. Of course, I'm 81 and my memory is fading. But, no, they're fine young people and the teachers should be credited with the work they do. If you had to teach me anything, you'd have your hands full. Other than that, I, I want to go and present them. Because I gotta get a picture for the newsletter. This is picture stuff.
You should get them a fake time.
No, I don't use a mic. I just, oh, I just need to get pictures. So you're going to make me walk all the way over there and I don't have my wheelchair. They even stand up. You guys don't do that at the meetings.
You all want to get in one? Yeah. I think we can.
Yeah, Marie, you're good.
Yeah, let's take a cute photo.
Let's all just get a picture of that, so we can all be famous.
We will get, all of us, because I can pop it off too.
Congratulations.
Hey, sir. My wife always told me, "A young lady has to extend her hand before she shake." She turned out civilized, man.
Well, yeah. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. See, good dad. Good job, Sam.
I know.
We have three days right here, too.
All right, let us move forward. We have Dr. Rab with a Service Minister South Shore.
Thank you very much. I'm pleased to present a donation from Mr. Marlon Blanco, the president of Service Minister South Shore. He writes, "I would like to donate $1,250 that could be used for school supplies throughout the district. I hope this small donation can assist teachers in getting additional supplies for their classrooms. I know how hard it has been for teachers and educators throughout the district and therefore I truly appreciate all you do for our students. So very pleased to present $1,250 from Service Minister South Shore."
Great, very kind donation. Okay, we have to vote this one, so I will take motion.
I'll move to approve the Service Minister South Shore donation to Situate Public Schools with great appreciation.
I'll second.
All righty, roll call, vote. Barcoski?
Yes.
Benwick?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Lindblom?
Yes.
Randlini, yes. Thank you. And we have another vote on the safety, on the lockdown. Oh wait, I skipped something. Sorry. I did that once before. Celebrate student learning. Enrollment update. With Tammy Rundle, School Counseling Department Chair. Getting ahead of myself. That's okay.
Thank you for having me tonight. I'm going to do something a little bit different. I know normally we do a celebration of student learning, but I was hoping to use this time to talk a little bit about the enrollment data that we collect every year when we have students that leave the district prior to graduation. But I also thought it was a good opportunity to kind of illustrate with you how the data from the surveys ties into the school counseling action steps and how those action steps, share the action steps, but also how the action steps tie in and align directly with the mission of Situate Public Schools and also the goals of the school committee. So that's what I was hoping I would do tonight, if you would so much. So, the school counseling action steps support the goals of the Situate School Committee and further the mission of the strategic plan. We are committed to the use of data to support improved outcomes for students. We are committed to improving communication and collaboration and transparency. And we are utilizing advancements in technology to support programming and services for students and families. So I know you've all seen the action steps before, but just in terms of the first one, teaching, learning, and leading, how the School Counseling Department uses data to advance Situate Public Schools' programming. One way that we've done that this year is we've used the results of the AP potential data from the students take the PSATs. The College Board gives a, an algorithm which determines students that may have, find success with taking AP courses. And what we've done is we've sent communications home to every single family and student that may, they do well in AP courses. And we were able to send that information home to families. And we are having meetings with our, the counselors are meeting with the families. Now I'll talk about the course selection process, which I'll talk about in a minute. Other ways, we use data, we use grades, we use EPAS data, we use ACTT data to devise and implement targeted interventions. In terms of analyzing the enrollment patterns, we're going to get to that in the next slide. And then, really, we, the counselors take a leading role in advancing the social, emotional programming for all students. They are leaders of their school, school's social, emotional development team. They partner with other educators and administrators to advance and integrate social, emotional learning and development in all levels of our school. Whether it's using the individual HSA data from the holistic student assessments for tiered interventions for students to small group psychoeducational support groups for students to large, school-wide, grade-wide interventions. Like for example, Cushing, they are putting together a new program called the Perfect Peer Ventors, where they're pairing up faculty and staff with students who present as some challenges on the HSA. And also, they're doing that as well as at the Jaken School. So basically, what we're doing is we're taking, really taking a look at that information from the HSA data to support students in the classroom setting in advancing the mission of, of social, emotional development. And we're also taking a leadership role in using the Character Strong Program, which we purchased this year. The school counselors are using their, using Character Strong activities and curriculum in their work with students through classroom lessons, but also through the tiered social, emotional support groups that we run. And number two, this was a big one, for communications, community partnerships. I understand that there was a lot of room for improvement, I will say, from our department in terms of getting information out to families and students in a more concise, direct manner. So one of the things that we're doing is working with our Digital Comms Program, Digital Comms Department, to enhance the counseling webpage with the digital, where the counseling webpage will be a source of all department resources and information as opposed to be sending out 400 emails to people down the road. So I totally accept that. So we're really working with, I'm working with Assistant Superintendent Driscoll and the Digital Comms team to improve that overall communication to families. And also, we are getting ready to roll out the course selection process for high school students. And we are actually in the process of creating a communications campaign for that, for that, so that students and families get that information timely, relevant, in real time. So I'm really excited about working with them to approve our services and opportunities for kids. And then finally, number three, taking a look at finance, facilities, personnel, and technology. We are really excited about enhancing our post-high school, college, and career civic readiness by using the most up-to-date platforms and the resources. When we're doing this on When we're doing this on two fronts. The first front is they are, we are applying for the Innovations Pathways Grant. And part of that process would be for us to implement a MYCAP, which is a my, it's a my, MYCAP stands for My Academic Career Planning Pathway for all students six through 12, so that students will be able to take a look at what their interests are, create a portfolio, take a look at more career exploration and immersion, so that by the time they are juniors and seniors in high school, they have a better sense of what they want to do when they graduate. As opposed to junior year saying, okay, what do you want to do now that you're, now that you're upperclassman. We're really taking a look at it horizontally, vertically, from sixth grade on up. So we're working closely with our middle school counselors as well to be able to bring that to our families. And we're using their Massachusetts Educational Financing Authority Pathways Platform, it's called the NIFA Pathways, to use that, that's going to be the platform through which we are going to house the information. And we are going to be getting trained in that, in the implementation in the coming spring, so I'm really excited about that. So that will be coming forth next year. And in addition, we are very excited to introduce SCORE, S-C-O-R-R, which is our college, our college applications, college search platform that's taking the place of DAVIANS. And all that information is in the process of getting up to our, getting up on our website. And that information will also be shared out to families and students. And students will be trained in our new program. Very user-friendly, parents have an access, can access their student's account. There's also a mobile app feature. There's also another feature for cost analysis. The parents or guardians are taking a look at how much it's going to cost them to send their students to college. So it's a really interactive program. I'm really excited to have it onboard. So we'll roll it out with the juniors, actually at the end of this week, and then roll it out to the sophomores and the freshmen later on in the spring. So, a big question on the table is the enrollment data, right? Are we losing our eighth graders? Here is some general information that we have pulled. Thank you, Mr. DeCross, our asked for the data person, to help me pull the numbers for this slideshow. If you take a look at the class of 2026, which is our current year sophomores, and class of 2027, our current year freshmen, you'll notice that we're pretty consistent over time. So we have 81% to 85% of our students stay in district. We have about 8% of our students attend VoTE. You'll see that's consistent over time. And then we have about 9, 5% to 9% of our students attend private school, with 1% to 2% of our students moving out of district. On the next slide, when we send out, just to recap, when we set, when we do our our exit surveys, once a family submits a withdrawal form for Situate Public Schools, the counselors call the families and offer them a tribute. And part of, one of the questions that we ask is, A, where are they going? But also, we ask them if they were, they or their student were satisfied in the following categories. And we ask everything from academic rigor to diverse course offerings, teacher engagement, sense of belonging to the community, if they're satisfied with the athletic, extracurriculars, arts programming, and student support services. So I just wanted to share some of the highlights from, from the information that, of the students, of the families that responded to our survey. Elementary, middle school, and high school, very, very complimentary in terms of the academic rigor that we offer. And also, our teacher, our teacher engagement, our educator engagement with our students and families. You'll see the elementary level is at least satisfied, would be more like less satisfied with diverse course offerings, so that's because they don't really have diverse course offerings at the elementary school. Some of these questions were really, I think, need to be tweaked moving forward for like maybe having a set of questions for elementary, a different set of questions for middle, and a set of questions for high school. This is the first, this is, we started with it last year, we did it for a few months, but this was the first year that we have the full year. So I'm looking forward to making some changes to the survey itself, because it didn't quite work. It's like, yeah, it's probably not the right question to ask for the elementary family. I will say, at the middle school level, the arts programming, students, families were very satisfied with the arts programming overall. Had a lot of nice things to say about them. And then at the high school, again, diverse course, diverse course offerings, rigor, engagement were things that they highlighted. As strengths for us. And then, just finishing up, what's next for us? As the, as the students mentioned, we had a very successful Set Sale Showcase, where we invited students and families of eighth graders into meet with our curriculum coordinators, meet with our Mr. Larranger. And it was a great success. We probably had, I would say, over 130 people here. It was, it was one of the best-attended events that I've seen in a long time. The energy was contagious. So we are looking for some follow-up on that information on that, on that night, making sure that we are hitting the targets that we want to share with students at the families, making sure they were getting the, getting the marketing out there for the wonderful opportunities that we have in Situate Public Schools. And our course selections begin in February after the roll of the program of studies tonight. We're going to get trained, called the College and Career Readyness Platforms for counselors, but also for parents and students. We're also implementing a post-assessment of the HSA, which is the Holistic Student Assessment Through Pair. Last year, we did a pilot, and we did a post-assessment for grade six only. And this year, we're running to bring it down from grade three to grade 10. So we're really looking forward to seeing what, you know, what might, what might have changed for our students in that time. And then, you know, continue to focus on communications and feedback to create the best practices that work for students and families. Thank you, buddy.
All right, thank you so much. Any questions, comments? Janice?
I'm curious about the enrollment.
Yeah.
And I know some of the other private schools have, they have their own middle schools now. So, I mean, I, I figured that the eighth graders, you know, it'd be nice to see like, over the course of, I know, at these 26th and 27th, that's when you did the surveys for these, these two years?
That is, the data, we just pulled the eighth grade data.
Yeah.
But we can certainly pull the information from like, when the students left in the fifth, or the sixth, or seventh grade. Is that what you're asking?
I think it's like two parts. I think if we had more data, like looking back of, even if we don't know the reason, I mean, I figure if somebody moves, we're going to know if they move out of district.
Right.
But I'm just curious what the percentage of students that are staying looks like. I imagine it's roughly the same.
Could do more of a longitude?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and also maybe looking at the kids that are leaving after elementary, going into the private middle schools. Because I don't think, I feel like that's somewhat, there's a lot of that.
It's getting more popular over the past, yeah, okay. I'd be happy to look into that for you.
And do you have any families that decline to answer any of the questions?
We do, we do. There were a few times where we reached out and had a hard time getting in touch with the families. Because some, by the time you get the withdrawal forms, it's like the end of the school year. So I did send a couple of emails home to families, and they were really, they were very honest with their responses. So sometimes I wonder if we would get more of a better response if we sent a Google Form home, as opposed to having the counselors have the conversation. But I also really appreciate the fact that the counselors are having the conversations to,
Yeah.
You know, so it's kind of like a, you know, 50/50. Yeah.
And with the, you talked about the, is it MYCAP?
Yeah.
Or the, starting in sixth grade? How does that start? Is that like you find out what the kid's interests are, and then you just kind of track that?
Yeah, so there's like different like career exploration tools, like assessments and things that students will be able to do through the NIFA Pathways Program. And students will be able to kind of like have an account, and families can have an account as well, and they can build a portfolio. Like, for example, we were talking about this at a coffee hour that Mr. Larranger had last week, and one of the suggestions that came up was, you know, having freshmen take a look at like the college application. But they don't know by the time they're, I know, I know.
I don't see that, so.
But you, but having, have an idea of like, okay, these are the questions that, that you may be asked in a couple of years, you know, to help them kind of get, get their feet wet a little bit in the community. So they would have like a resonate, they could be able to build a portfolio and a resonate for their, for their future.
And the SCORE, which is replacing DAVIANS, will help with that, because that is now available, that will be available to younger, the younger grades, like the freshmen and sophomores. I think that was kind of a, I think there were some families that were like, I wish I had it.
Once I had it earlier, right.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Is that okay if I jump in?
Oh, sure.
Sure, go ahead.
Great. Sorry, I can't, I can't, I can't see the school committee, so I don't know if you were going to ask questions.
No, no, you're fine.
Okay. I think, related to Janice's question, when I look at the enrollment slide, Tammy, I mean, do we think this 81 to 85, is that a stable number over time, that that's what we're retaining?
I do, I do believe it's a stable number that we're retaining over time. But again, I will certainly pull that down for, for you.
Okay. And then the survey, so on the next, I guess it's the next few slides, the survey, the family survey, is that going up to all students in the district? Or is that just for, I was kind of confused, is that just for families that are leaving the district?
Just, those are the questions that we ask the families who are leaving the district prior to graduation.
Okay, because the other thing I was thinking about, and Superintendent, I feel like Superintendent Burkhead has mentioned this a couple of times, that he wants to have a district where, you know, kids want to come to school. They're excited about being in school. And so I'm wondering, instead of sort of taking a, you know, are we losing our eighth graders sort of deficit approach? I wonder if there's an opportunity, and maybe you're already doing this, to think about, you know, what's keeping our students excited? What's on their wish list that would attract them? You know, sometimes you say things like, like what do we want to turn the volume up on? That kids are really enjoying, that our students are enjoying. So just thinking about where do we have strengths? And where are our students asking for things that you could sort of, you know, keep them interested in, in our district versus just thinking about the loss?
And I will say, at the Set Sale meeting, at the Set Sale event the other night, Greg Lanery, who runs our school to career internship, did an entire segment for our students and our families about, you know, you're thinking about going into architecture, would you know if you, you know, come to the high school and you take the school to career class, there are opportunities for students to connect with their, with their career goals. But I, so I feel like we're getting better at that.
Great. The other thing, just to, I know you have tons of stuff on your plate, just to sort of food for thought, maybe in the future. You know, a lot of universities, especially Stanford, I know at Hopkins, they're doing this, you know. I would love to see, starting in sixth and seventh grade, we do more of a sort of what they're calling life design approach to thinking about college and career, that it's not just about where do you want to go to college? What do you want to do when you grow up? But it's like, what are, what are your core values? And how are you aligning those core values with sort of your purpose? And there's a lot of really great material out there that I think could be really interesting for students and families to explore some of these, these questions that you've already mentioned. So just, just something to think about.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that.
I have a couple of questions, too. I was curious, just, I don't know this, and you may not know this off the top of your head, and so it's okay if you don't. But I was just trying to situate that 13% of kids that leave-ish each year. I'm curious, like, is that a typical number for districts? Is our number lower or higher than other districts? Is this a number that we are concerned about? I was just, I'm not really familiar with like what this looks like on average. I don't know if anyone, you guys might also know that.
Yeah, I can take that one. So, it is something, I think it came up probably three or four years ago, as COVID hit to, you know, and folks started doing homeschooling, moving to private schools, all this kind of stuff. So we were certainly concerned about where everybody was, and were we losing kids and were we not? And I think it's, also enrollment relates to money and budget, you know, per student costs and things like that. So, it's something we fall under the budget season anyways. So we thought it would be a good idea to start tracking and doing exit interviews as a best practice to see, you know, who we were losing, how many we were losing, and the why. So I think our numbers went up from 8185 there. And what we found, the first time, I want to thank the counselors for doing a real good job of this, because it is those calls and chasing people down and having conversations. I also want to thank our families for, they're one foot out the door, for taking the time to give honest feedback, and it's really helped us. So, when we first did this, you know, we found out that the majority of the people, because it was thought in the community that people were fleeing our school because, you know, the implication was we weren't doing a good job. In fact, most of the people on that survey, and probably from this one is two, were moving, just simply moved. And new people moved in. So I think that was the reason we did it. So I don't think it's necessarily a concern, it's just something to keep an eye on. But the one concern I have seen in jumping numbers is the, our number of students that go to the Social Vocational Technical School in Situate. And, you know, before COVID, there was approximately 40 students enrolled there. It went down as low as 30, and then recently it's jumped up to 50, 53. You know, and that was a question of mine, you know, why it jumped 20 students? And so, you know, another reason to look at that. But also, I think there was some things that we learned that, you know, when we did some of these questions and surveys, we weren't doing a good enough job of promoting our own high school. When other private schools, you see the lawn signs, hey, open house on this day in October, November, including the vocational schools and private schools. And, you know, it came to us, why aren't we doing that? So that's with the Set Sale, it's our first run-through, so a survey I think just went out today. So, we certainly want feedback on how we can always improve those things and reach as many kids as we want. So that's basically a long way of saying is, I think we're where we should be, I would like to keep more kids here. It's like when you talk about students with special needs leaving and going out of district. The question is, oh, how could we have kept those students here with more programming, better services? So it's the same thing here. How can we, why are you leaving? And if it's something as simple as, well, you know, my brother went to BCI, so my whole family's going? Okay, there's not much we can do about that. But if it is because we don't offer some vocational programs, or the kids didn't know about our internships programs, that's a missed opportunity for us. So I think this is just something we'll do every year, and just to keep a monitor on it. And it also helps us guide, provide the feedback on decisions we might make. And I like the idea by Dr. Rakowski is to, in a reverse engineer that, is ask, okay, why are, why are you leaving? Why are you staying? Because the majority of 85% are staying. So let's see why the kids are attracted here, and what we're doing well, and keep it, and what they'd like to see, so we can innovate and keep it innovative.
And I will say, I actually use those same questions when I do a senior exit survey. The seniors in the spring, they're all excited, you can tell. But it's also another, that's also another, you know, temperature check on how we're doing.
Thank you. Yeah, my, my sense was that that was not a concerning number. We're not seeing people fleeing in mass numbers, so I was glad to see that. I did have another quest, just two other quick things. One, I was just curious, do we collect feedback from recent grads? So this is a little bit similar to Carrie's point, but like, you know, folks who are two, three, four years out? Do we ever give them a chance to say, like, looking back now, I appreciate this thing that I didn't appreciate, or I wish, you know, we really had this? I was just wondering if we ever have done that?
Not to my knowledge. A few years ago, we tried to like extend our alumni network, and then COVID hit.
Yeah.
So I think I took it back to, yeah, but that would be, that would be a great opportunity, yeah.
Just because sometimes when you're in it, you don't know what you don't know.
Right, exactly.
And then, looking back, you might be able to see with a little more clarity.
Like, for example, we had a number of college freshmen come back in December to talk to the counselors about their experiences. So that was a really good eye-opening experience, talking about everything from mid-year exams and how much reading they have, and how they went to Ryan High School. So, but maybe doing that on a lower scale is actually a really good idea.
That's great to know that even that bit happens, because I feel like those little conversations can be really enlightening. And then lastly, I, again, I don't know if you're, if you would have this with you right now, but you referenced earlier that one of the jobs of your department is to look at the attendance data. And I know that's something we've been talking about a lot this year. And so, at some point, it doesn't need to be right now, but at some point, I would love to know if you're if you're learning a little bit more kind of behind the numbers? Uh, because it's hard to know from just looking at the numbers, like, we see, like, okay, these certain kids are missing this. I have no idea why. And so I would just would love to know at some point what you're learning, kind of high level. Are you feeling like the kids who are missing are predictable? Like, we know that this kid's on a five oh four and they might have a reason to miss, or, you know. Some of that I imagine is predictable and some of it, um, is not, and so I'm just curious. I'd love to know a little more.
I'd have, I would, I'd have to.
Thank you, thank you.
Just want to add to that, that, and I know it was brought up by a couple of the committee members when we first started talking about this priority and this problem. Statewide, district-wide of chronic absenteeism is certainly a focus of our work this year and ongoing. But what we're, what we're also doing, and I think it might be a good future presentation, is the stories behind those numbers. I think that's what you were learned, learned was, uh, we are working on that. And in fact, I met with the principal this morning and she gave me some examples. We talked attendance, we do it all our meetings, and then she gave me the stories at her school of X, Y, and Z. Why does a student have seventeen absences already? And they were very enlightening. And I think they'll be the same for our community and for the community. So we are working on that, we'll have that as part of a future presentation. Actually, it's a good idea.
That was kind of tied into my question, Bill, so thank you. Um, yeah, I guess my question is sort of, it looks like a nice improvement when you're going from nine percent. Well, first of all, these are two separate classes, so I guess, numbers-wise, I I don't recall off the top of my head enrollment in each. So, you, I guess, eight percent of the total.
Of the, of the.
Right, so I don't know how many, I mean, like, that's my twenty twenty-seven, I don't know how many are in that grade versus, I don't, you know, you know.
Yeah, I can get that.
Just theoretically, um, comparing the two grades, but I I'm assuming the numbers are close for those two grades off the top of my head, but.
They are very close, yeah.
Uh, but there seems to be going from nine percent to private schools to five percent. Given how small these classes are, that's a good amount of kids that did not choose that route, and so that might be interesting to know.
And we also have a number of students, families that come back.
Yes.
Yeah, every year as well.
Yeah, and being very tuned into the class of twenty twenty-seven, there's a lot of kids. I know we're at the vote tech, but, and I, and per Mr. Burkhead's point, like, there's very specific stories as to why certain families make choices. And that's, that's the, I mean, it's great to have choice in that, so, you know, obviously. But, um, yeah, it's interesting when you dial down to sort of the individuals and get a little more information there. To what Ms. Benwick said, there was a really, um, neat opportunity. It was, um, I think it was the winter concerts that a graduate, an SPS graduate came back and he, uh, made a big donation to the Stitch with Friends and Music at that concert and spoke candidly about how SPS really kind of impacted his direction and and his music career and and all that. So that was like another sort of very per your, your comment, a good example of that coming true. Um, all right, any other questions or anything?
Thank you so much, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
All right, the safety committee lockdown kits. They vote.
This was the presentation last night, uh, last meeting that we had not voted on yet.
All right. Does anyone have any discussion on that or we're good to vote? Take a motion on that? Safety kits. I will move to approve the safety committee lockdown kits donation. A second? All right, Barkowski.
Yes.
Benwick.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Bigwam.
Yes.
Randallini, yes. All right. New business twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school calendar with assistant superintendent Driscoll.
Hi. Um, so you have the proposed calendar in your backup. Um, Kate Martin is here, she's a part of the professional development small council. Um, and we reviewed the dates in the schedule that you have in your backup with a small group, a large group, the principals, and a second time over again. Um, to make sure that we have a correct number of days, we discussed some half-days. Um, right now, the new teacher orientation and the first two days of school would be the twenty-seventh, excuse me, for teachers, would be the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, and twenty-ninth. But, um.
Do you want to put it up there for you?
Yeah, could you put it up?
Sure.
There's no, uh, holiday like we had last year that is on a different day that we might have to shift it over. So there's no choices, um, when it comes to that. Um, we've listed, per your request, um, when, uh, graduation would be, the last day for seniors. Um, we would be bringing back two half-days. One in December, which would be for pre-K to eight parent-teacher conferences, the second half of that day. And, um, in February, we would also have a half-day for specific professional development. Um, other than that, it's the same type of calendar that we've had, um, for many years. The tentative last day of school, as of right now, would be June twenty.
Sorry, I'm having trouble with my, it's okay. The Microsoft.
Um, I will bring up, though, the discussion of starting before Labor Day according, correct me if I'm wrong.
Try and load it, um, yeah, okay.
According to our contract, right now, teachers cannot begin prior to the Monday before Labor Day. Um, so the earliest we could begin with teachers, other than new teachers, would be the twenty-sixth. Um, we've never done that before, um, because then we would be bringing students back at a different time. And when, when we did our thought exchanges for the, um, strategic planning and for giving us all this feedback over the, I, we were doing several things at once. One of the hottest fifty-fifty topics that got brought up, literally fifty-fifty.
Oh, yes, it's always.
Yeah, is is do we, um.
I've even, well, myself almost died before, like, yes, before, no.
I don't, I don't, I feel like, depending on where, like, it falls.
It's like my brain's split. Yeah.
Like, if it's late, then we're like, you know, but it's, it's really early.
I'm trying to share this, I I'm apologetic, apologies for the screen sharing, I just can't get it. I know, but I can't get it to fit, something about the way it's, the Microsoft, things didn't load correctly in the backup. It's not opening, we can't open it as a PDF, it's a problem.
Oh, I, we can see. Um, there is one thing.
It's like a Microsoft something.
There's another thing I'd like to point out, um, on September third.
Okay.
There are elections that day, so we actually can't run school on the third.
There we go.
In case anybody's wondering why we would not be, um, having school on the third.
Okay.
Could you remind me when the last day of senior, for seniors is this year?
No, I don't know that, yeah, I don't, I definitely don't have.
Well, I can look it up on the app or you can.
Well, I was trying to look for.
Typically, it's twelve days prior to the end of our, whatever our school year is right now, which I, I don't have.
Right.
Wow, it just seems like it's very close to graduation next year. I don't remember it ever being that.
Well, I don't think we've ever publicized it before, um, so you are allowed to have the day that seniors are released twelve days prior. So that doesn't mean, um, we have classes that day necessarily. Those would be likely senior events where they all come in and things like that.
Okay, so I think that might be really, um.
Graduation practices, all those events that end up happening are actual big days right now.
Right. Right, right. I, I mean, because, um, when you, it, when I first glance, last day for seniors, it looked, seems like that's the last day of, like, classes for the, right.
Yeah, that would not, that would not.
That is not the case, okay, no, I think people would be like freaked out.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, it isn't possible.
No, no, I actually don't.
So do you have questions about next year's? Um, if we ended up having five snow days, it would be, um, June twenty-seventh.
And then this is, that's even with Labor Day early. Like, I feel like we, even if we've looked at starting before Labor Day, we still end up some reason.
So if you look at.
The nineteen twenty of this.
Yeah, if you look at the week prior, we're not allowed to have, again, by the contract, we can't have school on the thirtieth. So we would only end up with one, maybe two school days for students. Um, which would push us back only, right, two days on year. Um, if you'd like us to take a a look at that, of course we can.
Does that know what happened?
About Labor Day? I don't know, it was one of my questions, yeah, it was one of my questions.
Or about the calendar, yeah.
I don't know, it's tough because this year, this coming year is earlier, um, but I feel like I understand the fifty-fifty split, I don't think, we're definitely not going to make everyone happy.
It's all, it'll always be fifty-fifty.
Yeah, um, but I think this year in particular, because it's early, it's maybe not a good time to, it's very much moving before.
Oh, no, no.
I feel like it's like five years, it'll be like.
Right. I think Marshfield does something like that, they're like, if it falls between, like, after the fifth, you know, then we look at going the thirty first.
Oh, that, that would be a good, yeah.
Because then that would also skew that back, you know, it all can add.
I I think that could be a good, you know, policy that.
But if it's prior to X day, we keep it after, so there's a little bit of a, a hybrid approach to it.
Yep, um, one thing I wanted to ask about was just, I assume November fifth, the PD day, is because, is that election day?
Yes.
Okay, and then the eighteenth of March is another Tuesday PD, PD day. The only reason I mention those is because I wonder if it may tempt some people to take a four-day week. And by taking Monday off, if we have Tuesday off. Um, I know the fifth, obviously, can't be helped if it's election day, but in the March one, um, I wasn't sure if there was a reason we had chosen the eighteenth, or if it was just kind of Tuesdays are good, I don't know what the.
Yeah, so typically, the worst days to have PD for attendance are Mondays and Fridays. Anything in the middle is usually pretty solid.
I was thinking about attendance for kid, for victims, like, for parents looking at that current calendar and are like, oh, I'm gonna hold you on Monday because now we have a four-day.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to think about, like, I think that's somewhere some parents' minds might go, I'm seeing.
Yeah, I don't think we had a huge issue with that previously, but.
Okay.
And I think with March too, um, there's so much going on.
Yeah.
We know it's a long month, but we're also in, like, MCAS mode or AP, you know, thinking about all the tests coming up. A lot of people are not going to do a four-day off in that time, it's kind of crunch.
Okay. Okay, that's.
It's in between two months with vacation.
Yeah, yeah, with February, you might have vacations, but.
Curious.
Do you know what actually happened? The initial draft that I brought to the large group, we had it on a Friday. And and the the large PD council said, whoa, what a, so we moved it to the Tuesday and then decided, um, it would make sense to do it, um, on the same day that we had earlier in the year.
I know, I know this won't be a popular question, um, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. Um, what's sort of the standing reason to keep honoring Good Friday? What, like, why that religious holiday and not others?
Swear we researched that, I won't.
Yeah. I wondered that, I don't know.
But, no, I just think it's, we carry this on from year to year. We've had, the first year, I think it came up for debate and it was decided to keep it, but, so it's a committee's decision, completely. So we're just carrying this on from last year, but it's a committee decision.
Okay, just curious.
So I can also say typically, um, I mean, it it is a religious holiday, just like there are lots of religious holidays people can take. Um, sometimes it's the percentage of staff that may take that as a religious holiday, or students. Um, that would have made that decision years and years ago, but I don't know the origin.
No, it's been like forever. Right. I know. It's a hot topic. And we have the half-day before Christmas vacation. See that still there?
Honoring that.
Honoring the.
Yes, by popular demand.
Yeah, I think that received, um, good reviews. I guess each year we can look at it because the further away the holidays come, I think it becomes less relevant to have a half-day, or if it falls on a Tuesday or Wednesday. It's happened to be, keeps falling on a Friday for some reason, I don't understand, but that was the rationale and I made some friends that day. You, you were all praised as well for making that decision, so.
All right, well, we can digest this further and, yeah.
Okay, so will you be sending feedback for a group to consider, or do you want? Because typically, we would come back and vote on it.
Mm-hmm. Oh, so you, for the group to, okay, right, this is different than feedback directly.
Right, the reason why. Yes, so the reason why we would come back to vote on it is so that people can plan their camps and their, you know.
Yep, yep. Absolutely.
It doesn't, you can't go to change it there.
Right.
We'll move to the future five.
So we'll vote on X P, is it?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, and how do you want, do you want us to email you with any, anything that you.
Question.
Time sites.
Since we don't have a formal subcommittee, um, if you hear, if there's anything any of you as individuals want to share, they should go through you, which should go to Bill.
Okay, all right.
We'll do that down somewhere.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, right, out of state field trip. For the cheerleaders. Hello, Mr. Payne.
Hi, good evening.
Hello.
Good evening.
Hi.
Well, first and foremost, um. Um, first and foremost, thank you for, um, having us on such short notice. Um, this came up pretty quickly, so we appreciate that. Then, um, I'd like to introduce you to our cheerleading coach, Deborah Mendez-Are, otherwise known as Coach Debbie. She's in her first year here, she's done an amazing job with the girls. The program has just flourished under her leadership, um, they've done very well in other competitions. The girls have been great, they've worked really, really hard. And we do have a unique and special opportunity before us. And Debbie, you have the, um, the budget and the itinerary in your backup packet, um, which Debbie put together. Um, as you can see, she's very organized and, um, is very tuned into the details and whatnot. And I'll let her kind of talk about the trip and and what's going to involve.
Perfect.
Do you want me to go through the itinerary or?
I mean, you can give us just a broad overview.
Okay, um, we're looking to leave on Thursday at some point in time, so we can get in and get them registered and then bed by eleven o'clock. Um, they get there, they get excited, they just want to kind of roam around, check things out. So I'd like to kind of get there at decent time, get them in, uh, all scattered in. Um, and then Friday morning, we have practice. Um, we are looking to practice with Duxbury High School, um, kind of like our sister school at the time, right now. Um, practice with them in the morning and then head off to the parks. Um, and then come back for a teen, teen dinner. Saturday and Sunday's schedule gets a little tricky because we don't know what time we're going to be competing on Saturday or Sunday. So if you compete Saturday morning, you compete Sunday afternoon. So like, they swap it. So I I don't, we will not know that schedule until probably a week before, when they finalize all the teams that are coming, the registrations. Um, well, once that comes in, I can have a better idea of times for you. Um, but this gives you an overall feel of what what's going on. So if we compete Sunday night, um, there's the victory party that's afterwards, that's open to all the athletes. Um, then we get back to hotel, we get up Monday, and we head back. Um, so they'll be looking for time off from school, Thursday, Friday, and that Monday. Um, but it's, it's, it's a good opportunity, it's one of those, um, they're not allowed to go to parks without me. I'm there, I'm gonna be the biggest babysitter. I do have, you know, a chaperone to come with me, obviously, um, I think the range is sixteen kids. I think the ratio is sixteen kids, so the ratio would be one to eat. Um, and if we go, we all go to parks together, it's not one of those, you go and you come back, some towns do that, I cannot do that, I can't be at the hotel and kids are in park, I just can't do it. So we all go together, and then we agree on a time to come back. Um, they have check-ins every two hours, they have to send a picture of them and their whole group to me, so I know that they are together and not off somewhere else. Um, and if they're gonna be on a ride at the time of the check-in, they have to take a picture before they go for the ride and explain why they're taking it. So some of the creativity picture, creative pictures I get is pretty good, um, it's, it's a fun time for them, um, you know, doors are locked eleven o'clock. Um, I've been on the trip before a few times, I haven't had any problems. Um, it's me, the chaperone, and the kids everywhere, you know, if, if they're at the pool, I'm at the pool, they're at the park, they're at the park. So, um, sorry. Very tight, very tight. So they, they're, they're very excited about this, um, you know, it's obviously the first time in history for Situate, these kids have got, you know, received this bid, um, they haven't been to states since two thousand eight, so this was a huge thing for them. Um, it, I think it's good for, I think our community and our schools to let these kids go, it's, it's their Super Bowl, you know, that's what they do, this is, so some kids, this is the only sport that they do. So they look forward to this, um, it's good for the school, because it keeps them, um, it retains them, you know, keeps their focus, keeps them into the program, if this is the program for them, that's where they're being, you know, this all-star program's out there, but they're expensive. Um, and kids just can't do it, so this is a good program for the kids to be able to come here, participate under Situate High School, go to Florida, and, and show them what they have, and, um, I, what an amazing bunch of athletes these kids are. Um, I, I couldn't imagine working with such good kids. You know, I, I came in, as time went on, I was like, wow, these good kids, you know, they're not talking back, they're hardworking, they're ready to roll. Uh, by the time I get there, you know, the raps are rolled out, they're stretching, ready to go. So I, I think this would be a great opportunity for them to go.
Yeah, I think you're right, I love the, the, and they're also, there's some, so I have a psycho Mike.
Okay.
Who work with Coach Ally and Coach Chloe, who, they're very excited to be all these.
Oh, right. Yes. So I'm sure you see me along the way.
Yes, exactly, yeah, exactly, so Ally and Chloe coached the girls with us, two, uh, victory with two, two first place victories in their competition, so, and they're, they're very great role models, and I'm, I have no doubt they'll be
Yes, they did great, they did great.
extremely responsible for you and, and Disney, so.
Yes, yes. They'd be very much.
But it is such a great, uh, you know, to your point, that the, the younger kids are looking up to them, and you see that this is an opportunity that's in Situate
Right.
Yes.
To, you know, all the, all the programs and, yeah.
There's something to work towards, and they see this now, you know, it's, it really hasn't been even a winter team in a few years, now I have sixteen kids.
Yeah, it's great.
You know, so it's, you know, people come to basketball and A and B games now, they're like, oh, we call it cheerleaders, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, it's an exciting time for them, and, and I do think that, um, the numbers will stay like this.
Yeah, yeah. Right.
And I don't see them decreasing anytime soon. Um, so I think this is a, a great opportunity for them.
All right, well.
Um, can I just ask a question? I couldn't open this in my packet, it's not your fault, but something was weird this week with all of our documents.
Yeah, no, no, yeah. Some of the, things didn't load, uh, into the backup.
Properly, yeah, it's not more of a.
We have, we have.
I was just, yeah, I was wondering if, thank you, that would be perfect, yeah, I, I was trying to think of all the questions that are usually on the.
Yeah. Right.
But, um, if you have copies, that would be amazing.
Just like a couple things loaded as Word documents, and we can't quite open them.
Sometimes you can.
But sometimes it opens, yeah, and then I thought maybe it was like an internet thing, because I couldn't get it to.
I thought it was. Yeah.
Maybe.
How many copies?
Four.
Four?
Yes, so I, I have, no, um, first of all, I wanna say congratulations, I think this is awesome, I didn't realize that, um, the level of success that we've enjoyed relative to what we've experienced in the past, so thank you for doing that, and I've kind of, you kinda hit on it, if these younger kids in our town have a model which to follow, whether it's cheerleading, or lacrosse, or some other sport, or music, it's just, I think it's a great way to keep kids in the district and just to develop some excitement, so thank you, and congra, yeah, congratulations to them.
Thank you.
Um, and I, I mean, before you said that you had been there before, I could kinda sense you've been there, and you kinda have, have been to this before.
I've been on it before too. Yes.
Um, so the question.
I sense a challenge.
I know, I could feel a pressure myself, yeah.
No, the questions that inevitably come up, and it's, this is gonna be kind of more directed to, to Bill and Tom potentially, is, um, we always talk about costs, and I've been solicited to support this group of athletes, and I've.
Same.
It's difficult, because I feel as if a team or a group of students meets a level that allows them to compete at a higher competition, that they should be able to go, and cost shouldn't be impotent. As a district, it's very difficult to budget for that, because you have no idea what those expenses are gonna be,
Right.
but I, I don't know what the total cost was, or how much they were trying to raise, but it was fairly expensive, I think.
It was fourteen, forty-four, fifty-three, that includes their meals per person, so that includes their meals, their gear.
Yeah.
Um.
So what will you do if students can't, don't raise the money, what will they do?
We have reached out to some, um, organizations that will help contribute to make sure that every child gets to go.
Yeah. Okay, and again, that's just a question generally comes up, but I think it's more of a process for us, like as we have more successful programs, whether it's robotics from last year, or the football team, or the cheerleading team, I don't know if there's a way that, as a district, we can set aside money, or if we really can afford to do that, uh, but it's something that we might wanna think about, because we would, I mean, I would not want these kids to miss out on this opportunity, because they didn't have the money to, at the same point, I don't know how we can properly budget, because it may not happen in particular years.
Right.
But, um, just something that I thought about, but I feel like these kids should go for a variety of reasons, one that they earned it, uh, but the finances, uh, no matter what field trip comes before us, one of us will inevitably ask, how are you gonna fund for kids that can't do it? And this is just an interesting one where it wasn't that, you weren't anticipating, you weren't anticipating success with the program, but not anticipating maybe that they would make this national tournament, right?
Yes.
So it kinda happened pretty quickly, so just something that I wanted to mention, and I hope that we can go, and again, it sounds like you have done this before, you know what to be cautious of, and feel confident that your kids, that your ring will, will buy it.
I, we've, you know, everybody comes from different backgrounds, different homes, you, you wanna make sure that you take into account, you know, your highest, but also your very lowest, and, um, I have already taken measures to make sure that every child gets to go. You know, and I want them to fundraise, I want them to work for it, I don't want them just taking, to take the gift and walk out the door, and say, I'm going, I, I also want them to work for it too. So, you know, they're, they have fundraisers already set up, we started that, and I have, like I said, I've contacted some organizations that are willing to, you know, wait to the end, see what, what's left, and see what they can do to get, to get every kid there.
Okay, great.
Do you agree?
Thank you.
When, when do you have to, um, what would that time, like, is, I imagine there's a time ramp, when you have to know.
Book the flights.
Yeah, we need to book the flights, we don't have booked the flights yet, every day we don't, it gets higher and higher.
Yeah.
Um, but one of our moms, um, has already contacted some airlines and contracted with them, you know, some prices, and, you know, fifty dollar deposit now, and then after three weeks, the balance would be due. Um, we do have some fundraisers coming up that'll give us that quick, that quick cash, most we could, we could book that. Um, so the, as far as the, you know, the hotel, the, the registration, all that, um, they are looking obviously now for something.
Yeah.
So we're working on that too, with the, with the fundraiser money that's gonna come in to get that, so Situate, I talked to them today, they're okay with it, I got papers to send them tonight, um, so it's something that kind of comes fast, but the final bill should, I would like to have it at least a couple weeks before they know that's our, our game plan at this point.
We were coming to the end of January, which is crazy.
Right. Fast.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, my, my only concern, my only concern really is, and if it goes along with our theme, is you wanna reduce absences, I know this wouldn't be absences, but missing three days of school is somewhat impactful, I think, if there was any way they could, the flight can be Thursday nights, they don't have to miss a full day of school, that would be my own comment, but I don't have any hesitation on that one.
Very, I'm very school first, so I understand where you're coming from, um, I've had kids on the airplane, you know, doing their work, and then I make sure of it, they've been on the bus before doing their work, and I always make sure of it, I watch them.
Yeah.
Um, I have taken, um, steps where each child had to get a letter from, uh, one of their teachers. So I know where they're at, how they, where they stand in their grades, um, so I have an idea of whose spot may be falling behind, and make sure I could help them, so they don't fall further behind, so when they come back, they're not now overloaded with the behind, the work that they're behind on, versus work that's coming up at the same time. So that's a possibility too.
I'll just take it back on that, we had no athletes academically eligible, uh, so we're in really good shape there.
They're a great group, they are a great group, I know a lot of the girls in the fantastic, they're so nice.
They're very good. They're unbelievable.
Yeah.
I didn't mean just cheerleaders, I meant everybody.
Oh, yeah.
No, that's very good.
Awesome.
It's very good.
Fabulous, all right, wow, let's take a motion on universal.
This motion.
Sprint.
Okay.
We're not really, they're really going to your competition.
I make a motion that the school committee approve the out-of-state athletic trip to Orlando, Florida for March fourteenth through March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. One second.
All righty, roll call vote, Burkowski.
Yes.
Benwick.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Limbaugh.
Yes.
Randallini, yes. Good luck.
Thank you so much, fantastic, I'm going for it, we're going for it.
Yeah.
Win another one.
Thank you so much, this opportunity.
Thank you for all the information you've provided too.
Okay, if you have any questions, you know, sir, no ideas for you, okay?
Just your comments.
Those are great.
Let's complicate the success for next year too.
Yes, yep, one step at a time, we're going for it.
Oh, that's a pressure.
Thank you. Perfect.
This will bring in, so I bet this success will bring in.
Yeah, hey, you might be on the strip next.
Oh, please. Sleep with chairs in my head. Coach Nicole, yeah, she should come check it out. You can only imagine. Um, all right.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, we are voting tonight on the program of studies for the counseling department. Any last minute comments, questions? All right, Carrie, looking good over there. Good, all right, if nothing, we.
I have, I do have one question, so on the vote, do we need to have like a, a year? Like a timeframe?
Yes, usually it does. Just a twenty twenty.
The school year?
Four, twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five.
Program of studies, yeah.
Go for it, Jess.
Oh, right. Yeah, it sounds like you're.
Karen.
Voluntary, yes. Yeah.
I can say that. I can add that too.
That's great.
All right. Um, I make a motion that the school committee approve the Situate High School program of studies for the academic year of twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Right, excellent. Roll call vote, Burkowski.
Yes.
Benwick.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Limbaugh.
Yes.
Randallini, yes. Great, awesome. More voting. Our subcommittee policy. This would be our second reading of BDFA E one and two. I will turn it over to the subcommittee to, yes.
Um, I'm just trying to refresh my memory, and I think this is in last, I don't think this is in the current packet either, so it's in the last, um.
The January.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so just a minute, I'm getting there, but, um, it is the second reading, so I guess when, um, when the subcommittee met, we did not make any further edits or adjustments, and we talked a little bit about the timeline, uh, because that's not specified in the policy, um, and we were trying to make sense of making sure that all the various goal setting processes that we have in our district are in a, in an order that is gonna make sense, so that one can inform the others and vice versa, and that, um, you know, we're just trying to be mindful of that, um, but we did not change the language um, in the policy, I don't think. Um, Jen, so.
No, I don't think, I don't think they really changed.
There's a server, it's an unexpected server. So I can't get it.
If you open it, if you open it on from the eighth.
That's where I'm, I'm in the eighth now, I.
Oh. We didn't really, we didn't, we didn't.
Yeah, I'm like, it's like, it's sometimes opens and sometimes not.
Yeah, mine's also been very slow. We didn't make a lot of changes, I think, you know, a lot of the, the discussion wasn't on the timeline.
Right.
Um, which doesn't need to be in the policy. Like when, I mean, if there's timeframes. I think one of the things that was unclear was that it doesn't specify in the policy the, when we give our feedback, but I think what we had discussed was that the principals would submit the, um, the plans to the superintendent by July first, at which point then we would read and give feedback, and then the superintendent would vote to, or would not vote, but just approve.
Yeah.
And so I think that's not necessarily spelled out in the policy, but that's kind of what we have discussed and agreed upon, so. I don't know if anyone has any, anything else to say about that, or anything else.
I think it was more, if I remember, it feels like forever ago now, it was more around the timeline, and I looked back at um, the meeting dates for when Superintendent Burke had, um, presented the school goals, and was just suggesting that perhaps we try to do that a little bit earlier in the year, right, so that these things can happen, um, so yeah, so I'm fine, I know we talked a lot about changing the wording, but I feel like maybe having a timeline, just, I mean, I think it's, it's also in align with our sort of other goal, to have sort of a rhythm and a sequence to our meetings anyway. Nicole, I know you've worked with superintendent to do that, so this just feels like more of that.
Yeah, but not part of the actual policy.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I agree, I think that's, yeah.
Yeah, I think the, um, we have the, the calendar now, the school committee calendar that plots out the year in advance, that you all have access to, so I think, uh, working through the chair, that that can be, this timeline can be placed in that in advance, so I think that, that will allow flexibilities, because it's in a policy, and you wanna change it, you have to change the whole policy, so I think we're, we have an understanding of the timeline, but we can also reinforce that by when we roll out next year's calendar, plop it right in there, and then move the goals up, and have everything aligned nicely, that would, I think would be helpful to everybody.
Yeah, I think that works pretty well, okay.
All right, we'll take a motion of policies.
I will move the policy, um, okay, so, um, I will move to replace and approve policy file BDFA dash E dash one, school improvement plan, and file BDFAE dash two, submission and approval of the school improvement plan, wait a second. We are combining two policies and making one, I don't actually know that that's the right language, is that correct? Vote to replace and approve, so.
Replace.
Replace and approve.
Yeah, yeah, so you're replace, exactly as it's stated, exactly as it's written.
Okay, okay, sorry, I can fix myself.
No, that's okay.
I just know we read the wrong motion.
Right.
We are replacing, we are, we have currently two policies, and we are replacing them with one new policy. Yes. Sorry.
Nope, that's all right.
Do I need to re-read, re-say it?
Genie small.
We're good.
I'll second it. I'll second it.
All right, seconded by Mr. Gates. Uh, roll call vote, Burkowski.
Yes.
Benwick.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Limbaugh.
Yes.
Randallini, yes. Wonderful. All right. Superintendent Burke, floor is yours.
Thank you, good evening, everyone, um, a few quick announcements, the first thing I wanna do is, uh, between our last meeting, and now we had our MLK memorial, something unique to Situate, and something we're very proud of, I just wanted to thank everybody, Mr. Adams, the lit teams, uh, families that were, community members that were attended, but most importantly, the students, I think that's become a very student-centric event. Art, music, dancing, uh, creative writing, poetry, and a real, uh, I'm sure Dr. King would be very proud of what our community has done, and we're proud of all the kids, so shout out to everyone there, thank you. And next, I wanted to talk a little bit about school safety. And letting folks know that that's my highest priority as superintendent, and what keeps me up at night, so uh, we like to take a very proactive approach, so I wanted to fill in some blanks after the recent, uh, incidents that necessitated communication from my office and a joint statement from, uh, the Fire and Chief Police, along with myself. So I wanted folks to know, and I think this, they presented here recently, we do have a, um, Citro Public Schools Emergency Team, Emergency Operations Team, that consists of administrators, our Assistant Facilities Director, our School Nurse Leader, um, recently. So I wanted folks to know, and I think this they presented here recently, we do have a, um, Citroen Public Schools Emergency Team, Emergency Operations Team that consists of administrators, our assistant facilities director, our school nurse leader, um, recently added a, a teacher on that committee. Um, but also its Citroen Fire and Police are well, um, represented. They need weekly. So that's not a monthly thing. It's not, it's a weekly meeting. So it's very proactive, up to date, and the right people are in the room. Um, I think a lot of the success we've had and a lot of the, what, um, makes me proud of the district and the community is the relationships and the great police and fire and safety, um, professionals we have in this community to give their time to come and meet with us. So it's a very close-knit group and some great ideas come from that. So what does this emergency development operations team do? Well, the purpose is to oversee planning and execution of emergency preparedness. So to always be prepared and current, um, on anything related to any type of emergency we may see. And so what are their actions they've taken? So some of the actions are our school emergency operation plan, which needs to be updated every year through DESI, uh, which ensures that you have an updated protocol, that you have updated policies and procedures. So when something does in fact happen, we are prepared with most current research and, um, operational, um, preparedness. Also, they plan evacuation drills and trainings for our staff and students and administrators that hadn't existed a few years back. And again, that's consistently, um, assessed and improved based on how things go and, and feedback from, uh, all those involved, including our staff. And, um, Crisis and Go app is something new. We're looking to use, uh, app-based communications, which will take place of the old, uh, when you go outside with a clipboard and paper and check off the names. Uh, the SAP allows you to monitor students, staff, people that they're in like locations that everybody's accounted for. For example, a student goes to the bathroom, we get a fire alarm, they go up with a different class. Really hard to keep track of that. Walkie-talkies is the, the old school method we use now. This is a more current, um, up-to-date and, uh, very efficient way. And there's a lot of things this could do. It's going to take multiple years to roll this up, but I'm very proud of the fact that we've made the, uh, to purchase it. And we've also had a, a series of trainings, initial trainings this year. So we'll keep you posted on that. Um, and then I just wanted to give, give an example of, um, the recent threat, uh, that happened at high school. And so right away, communications begin with school administration, um, the public safety, which is the fire and police, myself, uh, school committee chair and the rest of the school committee are notified. The actions that are taken in the school emergency, um, operation plan goes into effect, things that we have been trained on, that we have documents for, we pull that out if needed. Um, so that we have that as a backup to our, our knowledge and working, uh, protocols and communication with the school community. Let them know and although it's not always going to be as fast as social media, it's going to be verified and safe. So I think I, I wanted to thank our community for being patient because this last one was a long one. And, um, but I also wanted to follow up and let folks know that, uh, I received a lot of feedback from that, um, and it was excellent. And so immediately, two days after, I believe, the, the last incident, uh, we meet. Fire chief, police chief came down, rather, the administrators involved, myself, assistant superintendent. And we went through every step since we got the phone call, the threat, right up until dismissal of the students and how we managed to think. It also included the feedback in that process and the communications. We assessed how we did. Okay, we can do this better. This will improve. And we revised and updated so that next time it happens, we can do even better. So I wanted folks to know that, that these are things we take extremely seriously. We continue to learn and, and get better at things. No one situation is the same. So we have to, uh, rely on our professionals. But I also, um, wanted to let folks know that, um, all the, anyone involved in these recent incidents that I want to thank them. I want to thank that community again for their feedback, for their patience and their trust. I think that, that's part of what we do and, um, our most, uh, our highest priority to end with is the state's, the safety of your children and in this case, safety of anyone in their buildings. So I just wanted folks to know that. If you have any questions on any of the practices or protocols we use, I'd like you to reach out to anyone on the operations team, anyone in, you know, uh, fire, police, and also anyone, um, at the schools here. We'd be happy to answer any questions. So I want to thank you. Any questions on that before you go to events? Sure.
I guess more, uh, maybe confirmation of what, uh, my interpretation is that one, if a threat comes in, the police are called and from then on they're in charge. So even, I mean, there's a lot of chatter. People like, oh, what's going on? There's helicopters. It's, you know, my kid says this because of course now kids are in the classrooms texting their parents of like stuff that's going on, but you're not able to even communicate until the chief is like, this is, you know, what, what, what's happening?
And, and depending on the situation, so when, when we sent out the choice statement. So for example, a lot of people were getting confused that, oh, you have a lockdown. It wasn't a lockdown. It was, it was, um, so I think that's, a lockdown is the most egregious and folks would know right away and it's the highest priority. Um, but there's, yes, the police are notified right away, fires notified right away, so are public safety officials. The, in this case, the chief of police and his team set up command center right in the main office of the high school, um, people over at the middle school. So I think there was, you know, there's that presence and then there's a conversation with them. Yeah. In, in this case, they take over and we, we go by their guidance. They've got connections. They involve the state police. Yeah, I believe. So they have a lot of good networking to handle this. We're advising them. But I, it's also a collaboration because we're the educational professionals and like, when, when and what can we communicate and how long can people wait? We're also monitoring, quite honestly, we've evolved to this. We're monitoring Facebook and other social media, what's out there and what people are sharing. And that's thankful to the school committee too for being the eyes and ears and the ground when I'm sharing this information with you in real time is that, you know, sometimes rumors get out there and I just advise and hope people to kind of just, you know, to kind of squash them as they come out because even their kids might text something and they might have half the story. So to answer your question, uh, Ms. Limbaw is yes. We, we hand it over to the professionals and we're also trained on in the school. So we're also acting. Um, so it's a, it, it, but as far as communication, we take their advice and input, but also they ask ours. So, so it's collaborative.
But before, like you can't, you, you, you can't update the community out of like, you know, give them like half hour updates. That's impossible. We can't do that.
Yeah, and it, and it could be, quite honestly, in, in, in talking to the police and fire and best practices through, you know, um, their training, uh, it could be dangerous to, to get information out too early before it's verified. And in this case, before we had the dogs go and look and verify it. We said something out like, all's well or continue, then something bad happens, God forbid. Um, so it, it, it usually will take a little longer than, you know, than, than we'd like. In this case, it might thirty years. This is the longest situation, but it was, quite honestly, it was just accessing, it was taking an extra step. Police did their, their scope and they were confident the place was safe. That's why there was no other further communication because we knew it was safe. Um, but, but we weren't completely sure unless we had the dogs come in and just verify. And they took a while to get here. That was the holdout. And the, the long one, that was it.
Waiting for the dogs.
Waiting on, because they were coming from all over the place and, uh, you know, they're not, you can't just get them like this. So they're traveling too. So we get the dogs here. Again, that was a call we made just to take the extra step precaution. It took a little longer. And so the example played out here that we're hoping that folks can wait that extra half hour to know that we took every precaution to make sure that everyone was safe and sound. And that communication may take a longer, but two hours is, um, you know, again, if that would happen again, we may get something out a little earlier. That's a long time. And I don't see that happening again. Something we learned is that's when people start to get a little nervous and panic, half hour, forty-five minutes, that people can deal with. But anything over an hour, I think.
Yeah.
We've made an adjustment where we're, we're going to make a, a game time decision on, do we get another communication up there? So that's what we learned from this and that. Yeah. Depending on the situation, uh, two hours, we may have to get something out a little quicker on that. So. Uh, and lastly, I just had the Cushing Hadley new building update. Um, try to mention it every meeting because it's very important. Last week, we held a, a special meeting with the abutters, those that live around the Hadley project, uh, those most impacted besides the children and teachers, obviously, the people that live there. And we want to make sure that this project, um, that we have, we listen to all their questions, concerns, uh, and that we have a, a, a project that they feel comfortable supporting, uh, because we've listened and met all of their needs that we can. Uh, and it was a really healthy and great dialogue. I want to thank, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Withrow, who kind of went out and recruited all the, the neighbors for us and helped us with that. The turnout was huge. It was over twenty people. I was very pleasantly surprised with that. And we're going to have those ongoing conversations. We walked the property. Um, we got to actually point where things would physically go and get a visual. It was helpful to hear the, their concerns that we didn't necessarily didn't know about, like tree lines and if we were taking down trees and all that kind of good stuff. Water is a big concern. And we took some notes and we're going to get back with some answers for them. But again, it's a partnership and we're a community. And, you know, I asked the question, if that was my house right there, you know, how would I want to be treated and, you know, what concerns would I have? So I think we can address a lot of their questions, concerns, but it's just another group that we wanted to make sure that we connected with and that will be ongoing. So I want to thank all those folks that attended. Abutters and, and their patience and also their great feedback. Next, we have a school building committee, uh, this Wednesday at five-thirty in the harbor conference room here in the library. Some of the things we'll be talking about would be the, um, review, reviewing the schematic design phase and some of the initial cost estimates will be coming back. So we'll start getting some initial numbers, which is what people have been waiting for, which is exciting. Um, and then some looks at the, um, new exterior and interior designs of the progress. So they're starting to put some actually detailed pictures in place that are really exciting to look at and to comment on and get feedback on from the committee. So that's good stuff. The next public meeting for your calendar is out there is, uh, February seventh. At Hadley Elementary, we'll have more details out to folks. Um, but I'd like you to, uh, go to, uh, S C I T cit.org, our website, right in the homepage is the button for new building projects for everything we've done last year and a half, putting meetings, meeting notes, videos, public meeting questions, a Q and A. That's very powerful. So I really encourage folks that want to get caught up and acknowledged, go and check that out. Uh, that would be great. Also, we're looking, next step is to get on the school, a select board, uh, agenda, just to prize the select board, but obviously hit a different audience there and answer any questions that they may have, hopefully in the next meeting or two. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to have anything else? Carrie. All right. All right. Thank you, Superintendent Burkehead, or, uh, Dr. Rab with, um, FY twenty-four budgets.
Thank you very much. In your packets, you have a slate of, okay. Thank you very much. In your package, you have a slate of transfers for this fiscal year, FY twenty-four. And what I've found over the last several years of doing this is budgets are often voted six to seven months ahead of the beginning of the fiscal year. So we voted the twenty-four budget on February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. And since that time, there have been retirements and resignations and contract settlements. And all of the changes that typically happen over the summer into the new school year. And so as, me on Saturday, we'll be looking at the FY twenty-five budget. In order to make a seamless comparison between FY twenty-four and FY twenty-five, it's helpful to do budget transfers mid-year. And so that's what we're doing this evening. There's no change to the bottom line. It's, we still remain at the forty-five million dollar appropriation. But it allows us to transfer the funds to where they're being used in the budget so that we can appropriately compare to FY twenty-five. So if you look at the document that you have, it's very similar to the quarterly report. And that's one of the things I'm going to try and do with the committee is, is make sure that these documents look the same from quarter to quarter, from transfer to transfer. So you're looking at the same kind of information. Um, again, I won't go through each line. I did put a notes, um, column there so you can see the changes from one line to the next. Um, in some cases, there are many cases, there were no changes. In most cases, uh, the changes had to do with either a settlement of an individual or a union contract. Or in some cases, it's just a personal preference in terms of where some salaries are and aren't in the budget. And so I made some of those changes. Again, it didn't change, the person didn't change anything other than which line in the budget that they were being, um, taking a look at. And I made sure that we were, um, putting them in the right place so that when you look at twenty-five, it'll seem seamless. It'll make sense. So again, I'm happy to answer any question about an individual line, uh, but in general, this doesn't change the bottom line to the appropriation. And, and basically what I'm doing is setting the table for Saturday morning. So.
All right. That was my question. This is to set us up for consistent, seamless Saturday morning.
Exactly.
I can't open mine. I did look at it over the weekend, but I can't open it.
Sure.
That's okay.
I'm sure you can just take a quick look.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
So I, I first thank you for this and for the notes. It's really helpful to see that. I noticed the one that doesn't seem to have a note, or at least I can't see it, um, Dr. Rab is under the teachers, comma, classroom. And it looks like it changed by about a million two. I was just wondering, is there any sort of information you could give for, uh, help us understand that?
Sure, absolutely. So I didn't put the note next to the bold total, but the notes are next to the individual for regular education, teacher salaries and special needs salaries. So they were primarily retirements and resignations, but also staff moved to a correct designation. So many of the staff were put into the teaching lines when it was more appropriate that they were in the specialist lines for the therapeutic services lines, occupational therapists, physical therapists, reading specialists, math specialists. As I looked through the budget, I noticed that sometimes the reading specialists were in the teacher line, sometimes they were in the specialist lines. And so in order to, again, make it seamless for twenty-five, I moved people to the appropriate place. So you'll see that there was that negative million dollars in the teachers in the classroom, but positive million dollars in specialists and therapeutic services. So it was just a matter of moving them to the correct designations. Does that make sense?
It does. Yeah. It seems like you're, you're, you're still sort of working through the categories. So remember, we talked about this earlier. You've been sort of cleaning up and moving things around into proper categories. So thank you.
We can, if you go to page two, you can notice what we were just talking about. Toward the bottom there, if we keep going down more, but you'll see under teachers in the classroom, the negative one point two million, and then that's corrected below. So we're not, we didn't lose anybody. It's just a matter of moving them to another part of the budget. That's all.
Like a transparency on moving.
Exactly. Because as I was developing the twenty-five budget, I put them all in the specialist line. And then I noticed it just seemed like a real big change. So let's visit now.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, anyone? Thank you so much, Dr. Rab. We are looking forward to your, our budget. Thanks.
Could you leave a vote this evening on the transfers?
Ah, but we do.
Thank you. Please.
All right. Make a motion on that. Budget transfers.
You could say transfers as presented.
As presented.
Make a motion to, uh, make the budget transfers as presented. By Dr. Rab.
I second. All right. Markowski.
Yes.
Benwick.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Limbaw.
Yes.
Randallini, yes. All right. Thank you. So, okay. Go baby. All right. We have three different minutes to approve. Anyone have any questions or clarifications on minutes? November twentieth, December fourth, and January eighth. All right. Oh, probably the, no, you were here last time.
Oh, no, it was probably.
It was, no, we already voted that one, Janice.
It was.
We already voted.
Yeah.
Hang on, the school building.
Okay. Okay. All right. Take a motion on minutes.
I'll make, I will make a motion to approve the, uh, November twenty, twenty-three, November twentieth, twenty twenty-three minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Can I do them all at once? We got to do it three seconds.
All right. All right. Markowski.
Yes.
Benwick.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Limbaw.
Yes.
Randallini, yes.
Uh, make a motion to approve the December four, twenty twenty-three minutes as presented.
I second. I second by Ms. Limbaw. Markowski.
Yes.
Benwick.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Limbaw.
Yes.
Randallini, yes.
Uh, make a motion to approve the January eighth, twenty twenty-four minutes as presented.
I second. Okay. Markowski.
Yes.
Benwick.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Limbaw.
Yes.
Randallini, yes. All right. All set. Thank you. Um, Lawrence.
I do, I do have a few catch-up. Yes. There is one on the table for this evening.
Do you have one? Okay. I can't see. Oh.
But I do have a couple of catch-up from January.
Yeah. Okay.
To read into the, the events.
All right.
Um, from January fourth. Um, from January 4th, uh, $325,494.87. Do you want to do them separately, or do you want me to read all three at once?
Um, you can read them all together.
Okay.